Like check, like check.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for joining us this evening. Let's call the meeting to an end and begin with ladies and ladies of the flag.
No comma. There's no comma. No, there's not.
Thank you very, very much.
No comma. I added it.
I.
Sorry.
The chair will now entertain a motion to accept the agenda for this evening's meeting. Any comments? All in favor of the motion, I'd be known my sin I.
Aye.
Agenda has been approved. Uh, so everyone get a chance to look at the minutes from the previous meeting.
Yes, sir.
So the chair will accept the motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Any comments? Not. Now. Everyone cast their vote with regard to the approval of the minutes.
Aye.
Aye. The director show was unanimously approved. And we'll go now for public, if the chair, the floor is open for public comments. Any comments?
Um, there were none submitted through the portal, so the only comments uh for consideration would be those in the room.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Um, Cheryl, now we'll turn the meeting over to you for your director's report.
Okay, um, I feel like I have kind of a lengthy update for you and I will update the agenda packet that's on the website and I can email a copy to you all after tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Um, I really spent today kind of catching up for what I missed. I was on vacation last week and several things kind of shifted in some of the litigation going on. So I didn't want to put anything in writing in the agenda until I fully understood what was going on. So I'll provide you some updates today. Um, with regards to the board appointments, as you know, Senate Bill three eighty-two shifted the appointment of the county board chair from the governor to the auditor. Uh, that went through some litigation and a three judge panel last week did issue a decision. Um, that the county board chairs will be appointed by the governor. So it went back to how the law was before Senate Bill three eighty-two. So barring any other court intervention or appeals, um, the chair of our board will be appointed by the governor, just like we have in the last several years. Um, and the other four members of the county board will be um appointed by the state board of elections based upon recommendation from the state parties. So um, so that is a shift into how we thought it might go. You know, even the last meeting, I think we might have talked about it.
Just for the public's information, this is the same process that we've been using for the last four years.
Yes, correct, yes. Okay, um, next update uh has to do with the Griffin protest. Um, as you all know, this um litigation has been in several courts, several jurisdictions. Um, it's really a moving target. So where we are right now, um, the North Carolina Supreme Court did issue a decision earlier this month on April eleventh saying that um we would only be dealing with the protests for the voters um that are the U Okava, so the military overseas voters that did not provide identification. Or that were um non-residents or never resided in North Carolina. So those that indicated on the form that they never resided in North Carolina. So all of those voters that had incomplete registration, so those voters who didn't have a driver's license or the last four digits of their social security number are no longer being considered as part of the litigation. Um, and so those votes are not being considered to be removed right now. Um, once that change was made, it was whittled down to where Brunswick County only had one impacted voter. Um, and that was one military overseas voter who indicated that they never had lived in North Carolina. Um, there, you know, we were leading up to have action on that and then on April twenty seventh, twenty-second, the US Court of Appeals um stopped that decision from going into effect. So essentially um they want to determine if it complies with federal laws. And so it's continuing to go up the chain in the litigation process. So right now we are doing nothing. Um, with regards to contacting any voters um who might be impacted by the protest. So again, we only had one, um, but we aren't to do anything right now. Um, I did think it was interesting, the um state gave a presentation um to the counties. They do a a bi-weekly huddle where they kind of give this the county's updates. There's always a legal update and this is something that I did not know based on previous um findings of the court. So I thought I would mention this. Um, so the registration issue voter, so those who did not have a driver's license number, the last four of the social on their record. So they are removed from the election protest, but the Court of Appeals did order the State Board of Elections to correct and update those registration records um that were missing the necessary identification inform- information. So the state board is going to have to come up with a way to remedy all of those registration records that do not have a driver's license number or the last four digits of a social security number. I do not know what that looks like yet. The state is still, um, I think, trying to determine the path to get that done and then they will provide us directive as to how we do that.
A question.
Yes.
Uh, must that be done before the final case decision on the Reed versus Griffin case?
I do not know the answer to that.
You know.
I don't know. Um, I did receive a copy of the court order, but I will be honest, there were a lot of pages in it and I did not read it. I read the state summary for me, so.
I.
I can't answer that for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but I can, I can get it. I think that's separate from the protests. Um, and I don't know if they gave a deadline that all of those registrations need to be remedied. Um, and you know, I don't know what would happen if we try to get those numbers from a voter and they don't provide it. What does that look like? So I think there are a lot of um moving parts with that, that resolution that I I don't have the answer to.
I have a question. So these um, a lot of these voters voted in person and showed ID to.
Yes.
Now. Would not mostly those people use their driver's license as their identification? So is there a way that the they could write down the driver's license number right from their license?
Um, so in future elections, I think that certainly could be considered as a remedy. The state could say when someone comes to vote, there's something on the record that alerts us that the record doesn't have those numbers and we're to get that from the voter while while they're in front of us. Um, I imagine we would try to remedy those records prior to them showing up to vote though, um, but that's to be seen. I don't yet know.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would make sense though, yes.
Let me be sure I understand us.
No, it should, it should make sense, that's why. One, one more question. The requirement for social security and or driver's license.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we have any idea how long that's been in effect?
Um, so the Help America Vote Act, my understanding is that went, went into effect in two thousand four. So someone who registered prior to that date would not have been um required to provide that on their registration record.
I feel you. So it may be just a function of the sum of, some of these, some number maybe older than the requirement and they were grandfathered.
Yes, perhaps, yes.
Let me be sure I understand, um. My understanding, the court threw out a lot of the six sixty-five thousand, but whatever votes right now that are being contested. Um, and the ones that were thrown out included all of those that did not have either social security number or the um.
Correct.
Driver's license. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so those have been removed and of course, as I get updates, I will pass those on to you. Um, the state board does have a webpage up that there, anytime there's an update, they're amending the guidance or where we are now. And so I have placed a um news item on the front page of our website that links to that page. So instead of me telling you what it is today, I'm telling people, go read the state's website because it it will have the most up-to-date information.
Now, I'm just follow up to that.
Yeah.
Now, will this, excuse me, will this date now invite you to list of these people for you to remove from our voter rolls? Or how's that gonna work?
Um, I don't know, um, because right now the courts have said, don't do anything. So I don't know what, what the next steps could possibly be.
Do you already have a list of those?
So, um, are we talking about those that don't have an ID number? Um, I do not have a list of those. The state could pretty easily get that list for us. I could maybe find a way to get it because if we're to remedy all of the records, not just those that voted early voting or absentee. Um, so it would include those that didn't vote and those that voted on election day. Our list is going to be much larger.
I, I.
Yes.
Uh, just for your information, I, I, excuse me, I have a list of the sixty-five thousand.
Hmm, yes.
Say, can you say that again, please?
I have a list of those, the sixty-some thousand voters. I also have a list of those in Burnsville County.
There's sixty thousand voters without either social security or driver's license.
That would be in.
The state.
That would be in contested, yes.
That were involved in the protest. Yes, um, so that's where we are with that. Any other questions?
Was there any? Anything in the challenge relative to civilian overseas voters? Do you recall?
Um, some of the voters that were being challenged were military overseas voters. So under that umbrella, I don't know how many of those were overseas versus how many were military. Um, but that was um narrowed down to certain counties, not including Brunswick. And it was um relating to voters who did not provide a copy of their photo ID when they voted.
All right. You know, I just uh for the benefit of the board and full disclosure, um I personally have a concern about the number of civilian overseas ballots that we've been getting. And, you know, folks that indicated that they've never lived in Brunswick County and have no intention of coming back to Brunswick County, but are registered voters in Brunswick County. And um it to, to my simple mind, it doesn't seem to fit with the culture of the county that we would have that many civilians living overseas and voting.
Well, they might not be living overseas. They might be on vacation overseas or extended holiday. Yeah.
But, you know, we, we have some, some that indicated that they've never, never lived in Brunswick County and have no intention of returning to Brunswick County.
Mm-hmm.
And to be perfectly honest with you, I looked up when they came through, I looked up the address. It was one, one that had a, you know, address in Southport. And I looked it up on Google Maps. It was a vacant lot. It, it just raises a lot of red flags to me, that's all. That's just my personal concern.
I can make comment along those lines. I have a client, client who lives in Brunswick County. They have a son who is an American citizen, was born overseas to American parents.
Okay.
Never lived in United States of America. As American, he has the right to vote in any election federal. He has no address, did not ever live in Brunswick County, but he has Brunswick County as his home address.
Okay, yeah, if, if his parents are here, you know, the, I'm, I'm not saying there's not explanations, it just
It happens.
Seems, yeah. I, I understand, you know, you know.
So three hundred people?
When, when I, when, when I worked in Florida in Pasco County, we had many military. Uh, although we had no military basis in the county, the county in, in Florida, if you were military, you could register to vote in the county. But you use the address of the county, county courthouse as your residence address. And so we had a lot of those down there and there, there may be very valid reasons for a lot of them. It just uh I don't know. I just, I, I'm not totally comfortable that we have that many.
How many, but how many was?
I don't, I don't know how many civilian overseas ballots we approved in early voting. It seemed like we, we had a bunch every week. I think it was a lot more than a couple, but I don't know. Anyway.
I don't think.
All right, well, we don't have to beat that to death.
Okay. Um. Sorry.
Um. Audience member asking if they can ask a question.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Center podium.
So yes, step off, please.
Oh, to the microphone so those on the Zoom can hear you. Thanks, Ryan.
Hey, good evening. Uh, my name's uh Joe Myers. My question falls in line with what we were talking about. How many voters involved in that overseas category? From what I remember, you know, the meeting in January, we all agreed this was like a loophole. And it needs to be remedied at the legislature level. But the number of voters involved, I remember uh David Smodsky and I were looking at this. It started getting into the hundreds for Brunswick. And when you look at the vote count with the Griffin race, it does matter. So I, I just wanted to bring that.
I agree. It should be counted the same way in all one hundred counties, not just the ones they choose.
Right, that's my point. When you got a tight race, the, the numbers do make a difference, you know.
I agree. People.
Yeah.
Problem, everything challenges from town the same way.
Um, this is a quick, a quick question from my own education. Um, Sarah, when you, when someone who's out of the county rare registers, you do a check. You do you check the address or you check the social security number?
Um, so when we receive a voter registration form, yes, we do um check identification numbers against the DMV database and the Social Security Administration database. Um, we do mail a voter verification card, but that is sent to the mailing address provided by the voter, not the residential address. Some residences don't have a mailbox. Um, so we send it to the mailing address that's provided by the voter.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And it didn't come back?
Um, for whom?
Ones, if they don't come back, then they assume to be.
If, if a verification does not come back, correct, we, the presumption is that the voter was there and the voter received the card.
Right, okay, good.
Yes.
Any other comments on that subject? Good.
Okay.
Turn it back off to you.
Um, the next topic I want to update the board on um is we've been having discussions about our budget for the upcoming fiscal year as well as our space needs. Um, as you know, we're outgrowing our office, so I just wanted to provide some updates as to where we are on that. Following our meetings with administration where we discuss our budget and the things that we think we need versus the things the county can provide. We were asked to make a reduction in our budget um of around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we spent eight, and I say we, me and Adrienne spent a very long time peeling through our budget and deciding um what things were necessary versus what things were going to be nice to have. Um, maybe to help us do better outreach or maybe to help, you know, reduce some of the load on staff in the office. So we were able to meet the requested reduction. Um, some of the larger ticket items that helped us reach that were we had requested five Verity print workstations so that we could provide a ballot on demand. Um, print station at key election day locations that saw a high number of out-of-precent provisional voters. Um, the intention of that was to help us with Senate Bill three eighty-two and counting those provisional ballots on the Friday after the election. Um, if we ha, if we have the ability to provide the correct ballot style, we don't have to duplicate, duplicate those after the board approves them. Um, that was removed as well as fifteen um printers that would go along with our ADA voting machines in the polling place as well as the print stations. The Oki Data, that's a, a brand of printer, that's what came with our voting system. Oki Data is gone. They are, they are no longer making any replacement toners, parts, drums, any of that. So we were planning to buy fifteen over the next three years, so fifteen this year, fifteen the next year, fifteen the next year, because currently we're still able to get toner and things. Um, we pulled that. Now, the finance director has put those two items on a um kind of an excess list so that when we get to the end of this fiscal year and they have a better picture of how the county is across the county, not just our department, that might be something that we're able to purchase this fiscal year um before the budget is closed out. So it's not completely marked out, but it is um not in the budget for approval for the next fiscal year. So um I just wanted to update you on that. Uh, they did, oh, yes.
Uh, did you remove the fifteen just for the, this coming fiscal year, lost the fifteen for the next two years?
Um, yes, correct. So we have, we let them know if we pull this out this time and we don't get it on the excess list, next year we're coming asking for thirty. And we're going to have to have them because at some point we're going to go to place an order for toners and there's not going to be any toner available for us. Um, and so I don't know if the thinking is, well, when there's no toner, we'll deal with it. Um, or uh, really just just trying to get the, you know, the overall budget down because really finance is not just looking at the board of elections. They're looking across the county. Um, what kind of budget can they bring to the commissioner? So um, I mean, we go through this every year. They really were um open to working with us. You know, we gave them everything we could. Um, we, we really we didn't give them something that I don't think we can function without. I'll put it like that. Um, they did, um, as you know, in the last month, the commissioners did approve a new full-time position for us. So we were able to get that. We asked for an additional full-time position in the next fiscal year to do outreach, communication, public information requests. Um, the administration is recommending that that be approved for a mid-year hire. So that would be a higher halfway through the fiscal year just to bring the cost down, which I'm comfortable with. Um, because we're still going to get the position. It's, it's not something that they said a flat out no to.
Mm-hmm, that year would be January of twenty-six?
Yes. Yes, um.
And a quick question is?
Yes.
And again, now, what, what, what other, what are the position, what's the position for that new uh?
So the position that we just um closed an advertisement for is a position to help with all of the administrative functions that go along with poll workers.
Okay.
Um, managing the list, scheduling, training, all of those sorts of things. The position that will be a mid-year hire next year is outreach, education, communications and public information requests, managing all of those.
Okay.
Do you foresee in the next couple of fiscal years, adding an additional computer tech person to back up Mr. Johnson?
So what, I, I actually have a plan for backup for Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
I was, I was gonna touch on that when I talk about Senate Bill three eighty-two, but what we have um internally decided to work towards is we just hired someone as a candidate coordinator. Noel, who you all met, Noel comes to us with a background at the New Hanover County Board of Elections, managing computers, reading in ballots, uploading results election night. So there is already a background with that sort of thing. And being a candidate coordinator, that is not a position that has a direct election function. So there is a little bit of freedom for us to put that person where we need them um during the election cycle. So we are going to work with Noel and have them pretty much be Butch's shadow through um this next election. Um, and we're also going to need to do that because on election night now, we have to count all of the absentee ballots that come in election day. So we need someone that can read the ballots in, in the meeting with you, but also someone that can be in the back reading in all the election day results. So it, it kind of became necessary that we cross-train in that way.
Good.
Um. I don't know whether you're gonna get to this. I know that Senate Bill three eighty-two and the CARE Act have a significant impact on the deliverables between election day and canvas. Um. At some point, and I, I don't want to cut into the, your flow.
That's fine.
You know, I, I see that as a concern. I, I didn't, I don't know how we're gonna handle that. And so.
Yeah, so um key staff at the office being myself, Melissa, Adrianne and Butch have had three meetings now, I believe that have lasted hour plus where we've tried to hash all of that out. Um, we have come up with solutions to allow us to meet those new deadlines. And some of that is, you know, personnel in the office that don't have a key function, you know, on election night or the day after the election or two days after the election. All of that is going to be put toward, you know, the hotspot, which is going to be provisional research, getting the absentee ballots ready to be counted. So we're basically gonna just all hands on deck will be shifted to assist with provisional research.
Yep, we brought in some number of temps from August to whatever, July to whatever. Um, did any of that get impacted in the budget cuts?
In the upcoming fiscal year, some of it did, some of it did. Um, but I do think that we were able to find a solution. Um, when administration came back, the temporary part-time line item that covers poll workers and any help that we have in the office. Um, and they gave us a number that we had to meet. They said, this is the number we can give you for that unless you can cut elsewhere, which we couldn't. Um, so some of the things that we had planned to bring in was a temporary person to assist Butch with some of the programming and things like that. And when we started talking about it, we realized Noel would be available to take some of that load on. That's a full-time position. Um, being pulled away from auditing campaign finance reports is not going to have a significant impact to the election outcome. So um, some of those sorts of things.
Now, I was just thinking, could, could any of the temps, Kristy specifically, you know, be able to help with the provisional ballot research?
Definitely. Some of our, um, what I would call higher level temps that have been with us for several elections would be utilized to help with that. And I mean, even full-time staff like Adrienne, Ryan, I mean, we're all, it's all hands on deck to get that, that process done.
Um, at some point, when you, you pull that together, maybe if you could give us just a brief paragraph or two about how we're gonna do that so that you know, those of us who have an opportunity to interface with others can.
Yeah, and I will talk about that in more detail a little bit later in my director's report.
I didn't mean to.
Well, not in detail, just some of the ideas and, you know, things to expect coming down the pipe.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay. Well, it did have to do with budgets, so it was an appropriate time to ask. Um, I also want to let you know that uh in the next fiscal year, um, after all of this back and forth, uh, we were approved for the money for a Verity upgrade. So our heart Verity equipment, there's an upgrade available. It was just approved by the State Board of Elections earlier this year. So we've known it was coming for years and we've told the county it's coming and when it comes, we will need to spend this money. Um, but now it is approved and the county will be giving us that money in the next fiscal year. It's, it's a software upgrade. Mm-hmm. So the county will be. So the county will be giving us the money for that in the next fiscal year without us having to give something back. Because we've been having the dialogue about it. So essentially, normally if I went and said, oh, I've got another eleven thousand dollars I need to spend, they would probably say, well, where are you going to cut it? But they're not going to ask me to further cut my next year's budget to offset it because we have been talking about it. Um, and, and I will say, one of the things that I gave back was buying the logo attire. You know, I see some of you are wearing your Board of Elections shirts. I gave that back because that's not something we need. It's a nice to have, but management actually put that back in our budget without us having to give something back because it's a morale thing for us to have, you know, some county logo shirt. So I thought that was it's not a, a huge dollar amount, but I do like the fact that they want us to have those, those uniforms. Okay, the budget workshop is scheduled for Monday, May fifth, so that's the upcoming Monday. Um, at this time, I have no plans to speak to the Commissioners. Um, I do know that the County Manager's Office will be presenting uh more than one budget option to the Commissioners. One of those will come with a, a tax rate increase, which is, the, the goal is always, let's not increase the tax rate. I do understand that they will be presenting an option that has a tax rate increase that would allow them to fully fund everything we asked for. So. So if there's a tax increase that might come back, that it's just because the Board of Elections had so many asks. Well, yeah, so.
As long as they give a teacher's raise too, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a again, you feel pretty comfortable with what we've done?
I do. I do, yes. I, I think we can work with what we've had to remove.
And you feel comfortable that um the upcoming elections will be able to accommodate?
Yes, I do.
And you're gonna let us know about the uh plan that you and Melissa and Adrianne accept?
Yes, yeah, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about what we've come up with um in just a little bit to meet those new deadlines because it, it's a lot. It is a lot. Um, I do want to also touch on our space needs. So um about a month ago, I let the board know that there was this new building coming for Health and Human Services. It was presented that they would move Board of Elections into that building. Um, after that point, I had some meetings with the county um engineer and the Assistant County Manager, who is um over the Board of Elections. And we had some dialogue about, you know, what our needs are versus what they could accommodate in this new building. And ultimately, I think that the space that we require is more than they could allot to us in the new building. So right now, there is no plan to move us to the new building. Um, there are plans in place to help us move some things around to where we can still work with them. So one of those being the schools have purchased this big warehouse space in Shalote that was the summer home furniture um storehouse, yes, right by the senior center. So the schools have purchased that property and they are leasing a portion of it to the county for storage. So we will have some space in that to store the things that we don't need to get to routinely, like the retention. You know, we have to save every ballot and every piece of paper from an election for twenty-two months. That will clear out some of our space in the existing warehouse. There are also plans to move other departments out of the on-campus warehouse to that summer home location so that we have more workable space in the warehouse that we can get to by driving across across campus versus driving down to Shalote. Um, because that just doesn't really work when we're thinking about, you know, preparing supply cages. Um, longer term, uh, there is a plan for all of the um departments and I'm trying to get my bearings where we are. So Building I, which is behind this building, it's the building that has Register of Deeds Planning Department, yes. Yeah, I'm like one of these directions. Um, when the new Health and Human Services building is completed, all of those departments will be vacating Building I. Um, Building I is not up to par to house offices and will not be up to par to house offices, but it will be turned into storage space. So that would give us storage space right across the parking lot from our current building. Um, so all of those things, I think we can make work. Um, really, we've got to find spaces to store some of our things if we're going to keep adding to staff because our building, we just don't have the space right now to do all of it. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
What about security for the uh ballots? If you move them to uh the school?
During the retention, yeah, so um, they would be in a locked cage essentially, so inside the warehouse. Um, and inside our warehouse here, we have the same thing. Every department has a, a cage and it goes up and, you know, kind of over and it's, it's locked, so no one can access it uh uh other than us. I don't know beyond that what security measures are going to be in place because I don't even know that the lease has been signed yet. Um, so that might be some of the details that they haven't yet worked out, but the schools are also going to be using that space for storage of some of their things. So I imagine there will be security measures in place that would ensure that things weren't tampered with.
What about fire?
Probably the same amount of protection that we have in our current warehouse, which is nothing. There, there's no protection in what we have right now to prevent something from being burned in a fire. I will say it's not moved over there until an election's certified, you know. Nothing goes to the warehouse for retention until we have, you know, exceeded the state canvas of an election.
So it means your other spot is still.
Yeah.
Two, two questions.
Yes.
The signage on the front of the homes in Shalote says Operations Center. Which to me would seem that they would have some kind of personnel staff in there. Is there any chance that we could use that facility as a polling place?
I doubt it because I think it's going to be full of things.
Okay.
Items, storage cages, things like that. Um, and it's also going to house the um, the school's print shop, so where they print everything for the, the school district. Yeah, after looking at the building and realizing that they're gonna put individual cages in, I don't think there would be an open space inside. Once it's done, not a bad idea though.
Yeah, yeah, always looking.
Yes, always looking.
And I've been on the board now for about twelve years. I can never recall any time where we've had to go back and pull ballots from a prior election once they've gone to the warehouse. You, you know, in that twenty-two month.
I mean, for records requests, occasionally we do have to go looking in the old files, but it's never ballots. It's always, you know, like a form or something like that.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, not often.
I can understand why we're keeping them for twenty-two months, but I, I don't ever remember somebody having to go and pull a ballot.
It's, it's not common. No, it's not common. Um, all right, the next item I just wanna um update the whole board on. Um, Chair Lewis was with me. We went and met with the Board of Education a few weeks ago because the school calendar for next year came out and it did not have designated teacher workdays for the municipal election and the primary election. And um after some back and forth, we realized there was some miscommunication between our office and someone that was assisting with putting the calendar together over there. Um, the dates were not recorded correctly. Um, and so it wasn't designated a teacher workday. Um, the Superintendent and the Chair of the Board of Education and the Assistant Superintendent really wanted to talk to us about what would it look like if you went somewhere else in a smaller election? You know, like, do we need to go back and change this calendar for these elections when it might be possible there's a suitable location elsewhere? Um, after the meeting, I do think that they were on the same page and very understanding that that is not something we would want to do. Every time we move a polling place, you know, that confuses voters and they're going to go to the wrong place because we've moved them around. Um, and we also provided some, some data that showed that even in a small election or what someone would deem a small election, like a municipal election, the turnout on election day is really not that much smaller than it is in other elections. Because, you know, in a presidential election, we have early voting, so that pulls a lot of people out of the election day voting group. Um, but in early voting or in municipal elections, we don't really see that. So the numbers don't really provide for a low turnout election on election day, um, the way that I think they were thinking it did. Um, in a nutshell, they did change the calendar. They agreed to change the calendar. Uh, we also provided them with a ten-year calendar of all future election dates based on what the law says now about when elections are held. Um, you know, with caveat that if the law changes, these are no good. Um, so that they can have that on file for future calendar purposes. That way we don't get into this situation again. Uh, Mr. Lewis, did you have anything to add about that meeting?
No, no, I think it was a very good meeting, quite frankly. What I think you all would have been very proud of the way Sarah handled the, the situation.
Thank you.
Very compliments to her.
Another que- question that you little difference, you can talk about the uh early voting and, and taking the load off of election day. Uh, this last election, uh, huge number of people uh stopped going to the general election and, and voted early. Do you think that will continue or do you think people will vote on election day?
I think that early voting continues to become more popular just because there is the flexibility to go any day you want, any time of the day. Um, weekends, I, I think that early voting is going to continue to be um one of the most popular ways. In most elections, I say most elections because, you know, municipal election, when we just have one location in Bolivia, it's not that popular, but I think in primaries and mid, you know, midterm generals and then presidential primaries and generals, I do think that early voting is going to continue to be um, where the majority of the voters go.
Yeah, and this, this last election, it wasn't just the majority, it was the huge.
Huge majority, yeah.
Almost nobody showed up on election day. Uh, which solved our election day. But caused us some problems.
It did.
Early voting.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm curious whether what you think, will we, we continue to have very low turnout on election day?
Um, I think it's going to depend on the location and where we have early voting sites located. Um, we have a, staff has a meeting Friday this week because we really are continuing to have the challenge of where do we have early voting? You know, we got through the presidential election in Southport at the Moose Lodge, but that's not an ideal solution, you know, so we need to start thinking, you know, in the primary next year, where are we gonna have early voting in Southport area? Um, the Shalote area, we don't really have anything in the Shalote area. The senior center really cannot accommodate us for early voting because we're in the large open room where you can hear people having lunch, you can hear people, you know, there's, there's no delineation of an actual room from other senior center activities. So we've got a lot of locations where we we're in trouble, um, because trying to find facilities that can accommodate us for seventeen days, it's very challenging.
Well, nobody wants us.
Nobody wants us for early voting, that's right.
It's actually, it's actually closer to three weeks because every voting location is also an election day location, so. And, you know, just a, a comment, and I can't address the northern part of the county, but the southern part of the county and I mean, Tim has seen this. They're, they're clearing land down there and literally we're looking at tens of thousands.
In the north also.
Okay.
New, new. Um, it's gonna be a challenge.
It really is.
North end is gonna be just as bad.
It is.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Um, fortunately, in the north end of the county, um, we didn't use a lot, utilize it last year, but we also have the Navassa Community Center, which I think is a viable location to have an alternate early voting site up there so that, you know, we can split. I still think the Cultural Arts Center would see the majority of people, but when they pull up and see the line, being able to tell them there's another spot, ten minutes up the road, if you want to take that drive is, is gonna be really helpful.
Will you use the Leland Se- Seater Center for a couple of years?
Um, we did, the, the parking there is horrendous. I don't know, okay.
There was a big issue with the construction.
Construction, yeah.
Well, and what happened at Wingwood this last time was when they saw the long vines, they went to uh Shalote.
Bolivier Supply, mm-hmm, yeah. But not everyone has the luxury of being able to drive that far, you know, so.
They check the app.
Yes, check the app.
That app was, that app was great.
It was great. Okay, all right, so that's my update on the calendar. Um, and now I'll talk a little bit about the workload and how we're going to accommodate the new deadlines with Senate Bill three eighty-two. So one of the big ones is that provisional research has to be completed and we have to be ready to make a recommendation to the board about approvals by Friday, the Friday after the election. So that gives us Wednesday, Thursday, and really that's it. Um, we have to know before we go home Thursday what needs to happen with all of those provisional ballots. We can't come in Friday morning before a board meeting and still be scrambling to make decisions about that. So some of the things we have worked on, um, because it's not just about what happens after election day, it's some of the things leading up to election day. Um, we're gonna have someone, we're gonna work with IT and, and see if they can give us a staff member for election night that when the electronic poll books come back to our office, they are going to open those up and pull the voter history files, which have all of the provisional voter information. So we usually do that Wednesday morning, you know, it's not, never been something that was pressing. We're gonna take care of that on Tuesday night, election night. We're gonna pull the voter history, so we have all the provisional information from the laptops and then we will read it into SEAMS. And what that will do, it will give us the DMV research a day sooner. Um, so the DMV, what happens? Voters give their driver's license number for their provisional record. We type it in, SEAMS automatically checks with the DMV to see if there's a voter registration record for that voter and it tells you what date it happened, where it happened. So we use that if a voter says I registered at the DMV, we check with the DMV and we would get a hit back. Maybe it does say Brunswick County, registered on such and such a date. We would be able to get that a day sooner, so we would get that on Wednesday if we upload those files on Tuesday night. So we're gonna take that step and try to get those files updated Wednesday night. Um, we're also gonna have temporary staff that night. Once we get all the ballots in, go ahead and sort those into the reason that the person voted provisional and sort them by last name because that will help us really quickly audit, you know, the envelopes to the computer and the, the names of voters in the computer. Like, that's the first thing we do before you need to start, you know, handing people stacks of ballots to research. We need to make sure we can account for all the ballots that we think we should have. So we're gonna do that Tuesday night as well. Um, then on Wednesday, we have a plan to set up workstations in the training room and have just like a war room of you know, full-time staff, key temporary staff doing the research. Um, doing the research together. And we're hoping to design it such that Melissa is free to deal with all of the wonky ones. I mean, that's what we call them, the ones that are not clear-cut, like I'm not registered or I am registered, but they have you know, more of a background story to them that really takes some thought, sometimes working with the state to see what the state would say. Um, so the goal is to try to keep Melissa free to deal with those and have other staff members doing the research for, you know, the person that came in and voted in the incorrect precinct. You know, the research on those is really not that difficult, but it has to be done, you know. So, so that's kind of where we landed there. I do plan to have an updated board meeting schedule for you at our next meeting because you know, right now I think our schedule says we'll be doing a sample audit count on Friday. Well, we're not gonna be doing a sample audit count on Friday because we're gonna have a meeting to count provisional ballots on Friday now. So some of those dates are gonna be shifting around to accommodate this.
Let me say a question.
Yes.
Great plan, all stuff we're looking at doing on Tuesday night. Do you literally have the space over there to do all that?
Um, it's, it will be tight and during all of our conversations, the space concerns have come up. Um, you know, because when we think about even um having a place for the person from IT to pull those files, you know, where are we gonna put that process? That's not going to be in the way of another process, like checking in in the back room, all of the chief judges that are coming in or the board meeting happening in the training room. Um, I think we've kind of sorted out where we would place those key people and how to keep them from being in the way, essentially. So I, it's going to be tight and not ideal, but we have figured out how to make those things work.
I will, I will say this for myself.
Thank you.
That if you have to feel it's necessary to shift the board to a spot that's perhaps a little more cozy than in the big room, I don't think anybody's gonna argue with you. that's perhaps a little more cozy than, than the big room, I don't think anybody's gonna argue with you.
Yeah.
She can sit in the parking lot.
Well, I mean, I don't really have another place to put you that would be any smaller, so I think you're gonna get to keep the training room.
Well.
Whenever you need us to, I'm all.
Yeah.
I, I guess the, the point is that I think the five of us are willing to work with you.
And really, Tuesday night, I need there to be space for you to, you know, approve absentee ballots. Because, I mean, we could have a delivery of absentee ballots at seven thirty PM. And then ha- you know, staff has to review those and they might not be ready for you to approve until eight thirty PM. And then we've gotta be able, be ready to read those in. So we do still need a sufficient space for the board processes as well, unfortunately.
This, I don't know, it's a fair answer to this question. Is the anticipated extra labor cost associated with doing what you just described? Offset, would that offset the cost of additional ballot on-demand machines that we couldn't get?
Well, the, the additional labor really is going to come from full-time county employees. You know, and so that turns into comp time. Yeah. Once you.
Hope we're not taking full-time county employees and not paying them for their own.
Well, if they're, if they're, like, so all of our staff, if they work overtime, they get comp time, so they get time and a half to take later. So they're not technically getting paid for it until they reach a certain threshold in a year and then they get paid out, you know, anything over forty hours. Exempt employees, you know, like if I get someone from IT and they decide I'm getting their deputy director, they're salaried. So there's no additional cost there. They just work what they need to work. Same with me. I work what I need to work. So there's.
I, I just want to make sure that, that our folks and anybody that comes in to help us is being treated fairly.
Yes, for sure.
You know. You have somebody to come and give you a hand and then, you know, well, you're gonna get comp time.
Well, we're really just, so the, the ballot on demand and the not having to duplicate the ballots, we would have needed those people anyway, just a week later to come in and do that work, so.
I'm just.
Yeah, I completely understand what you're getting at. It's not ideal anyway, you look at it.
Budget game.
Okay, the only other update I have for you. I think you all were aware, the president issued an executive order that had a lot to do with elections. We did get a small update from the state last week, so I'll pretty much read verbatim what they said. So currently, there's no update or action needed by our office because most of the mandates in that executive order have to do with federal agencies, not the county level. And they did say that on April seventeenth, there was a hearing or a hearing slash consultation on a preliminary injunction. I think that's at the federal level. So none of that really has to do with us. So at this point, all of those requirements in the president's executive order have not filtered down to our level yet. So that's the update. It's not really an update, but I did, I did think that it was interesting to note that there is no update for us on that yet. Okay, that is all I have for Director's Report. And as I mentioned, I got these notes finished this afternoon, so they didn't make it in your agenda packet, but I will update that agenda packet and I can send it out with all of the specifics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, we'll go to old business.
But, yeah. This new business, I guess this, there's a job period you're going to, Brumson County Job Fair.
Yes.
Can you tell me something about that?
Melissa, can you tell him something about that? Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Melissa, before you start, Tim, can you repeat your question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Brunswick County is having a Brunswick County Job Fair and I wanted some more information about that because they said that the board of elections is gonna be there.
I, I apologize, it's a function of poor hearing.
There is a job fair on campus next Friday, the ninth. It will be in the cafeteria building. Ryan and myself will be there because we have the most opportunities during an election season. Ryan always looks for at least one rover, sometimes more than one rover during an election to help get supplies ready, prepare, have control over the, what goes on in the warehouse as well as servicing one-stop location or early voting locations and election day locations with supply running. So Ryan's gonna be available to talk to anybody interested in that. I will be available to talk about poll workers because we always are recruiting additional poll workers. So that will be our primary function at the job fair next Friday.
Yeah, sharing information about the temporary opportunities that we have because you never know, most people that come to a job fair are probably seeking full-time permanent employment, but you never know, somebody might say, you know, I don't really know what I'm looking for, this sounds really interesting, sign me up.
Is it gonna be like free food or something? Maybe I'll bring people in.
I doubt that. I doubt it.
What was the hours?
I would, hold on, let me check my calendar. I bet I got it on there.
I wanna say ten to two.
I've got ten to one.
Okay.
Okay, long as you're there at ten, you're good to go.
Yeah, we'll be there at ten.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Ten to one, I just found it on the website.
Oh, let's see, old business? Your new business?
Oh, I should have waited.
I don't have any new business, but before we adjourn, in the interest of openness and full disclosure for my Democratic friends that ended a counter, the handsome gentleman in the blue shirt out here is Mike Tuohy. Mike is our new Republican county chair for the next two years, was elected in March. Welcome, Mike.
Welcome, yeah. Look forward to seeing you again. Any other comments? The chair, when they entertain a motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
And probably move, all in favor of the motion, I've been almost in eye.
Aye.
Aye. The record show it was announced to approve, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to see the board for a moment.